We are now back in open session, no action was taken. So y'all are actually joining us. We started our meeting earlier, so I've already hit the gavel and we are, we are ready to roll. So we're gonna go ahead and kick off with our moment of silence, if you will join me. Thank you very much. Again, thank you all for being here tonight to celebrate all the great things that are happening in Lincoln County schools. And we will go ahead and have our Pledge of Allegiance students come up and join us at the dais. So I'm gonna take a moment and introduce them. So I have two students from Battleground and two from Iron Station Elementary. And I actually, this is my first time getting to meet them as well. So I am going to talk to, um, let's see, how about Tinley? Are you Tinley? Hey. Alright, so I was told that Tinley Hobus, you are in 4th grade? Alright. And Tinley loves travel softball, Optimus basketball. Are you in a trout club? Okay, come here. Tell me a little bit about the trout club.
We grow trout and then we release them at the end of the year.
That sounds amazing. How many trout are we talking about?
Like one.
Like a couple?
No.
Okay. Like five? Five.
A lot.
What? Seriously? That's awesome. Alright, so it says that you are a part of Loving Lincoln, the Lincoln County Project, and that you are in the Jams Club. Alright, fantastic. Well, it's great to meet you. Alright, so I have Alden. Did I get that right?
Alden.
Alright, okay. So you are a self-taught guitar and ukuleleist. Which one's your favorite?
Guitar.
Yeah.
Alright, so my husband plays guitar and I wanted to get him a ukuleleist as well. So would you recommend that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so you are also involved in the Loving Lincoln Projects. You enjoy spending your free time playing outside with the neighborhood kids. Yeah, so it's warm today, were you outside?
Yeah.
Okay, I love it. Alright, thank you for being here. So I have Leila. Leila Ray. Is it all of it, both names together? Lala. See, I'm killing, I'm butchering it tonight, y'all. Lala, you go by Lala Ray, right? The whole thing? Just Lala? Okay. So you love sports. What's your favorite color?
Blue.
And it says that, it says that you live on a farm. What kind of animals do you have?
Cows, chickens, one horse, and dogs.
Nice. Alright, well, thank you for being here. And I have Evelyn. Okay, is it Evelyn Anne? Or is it just Evelyn? Okay. See, they give me whole names and I don't know. Alright, so, okay, well, it says that you are shy. And it says that you love animals. What is your favorite animal?
Uh, honestly, I have a lot.
Give me top three.
Probably cats, hamsters, and sugar gliders.
Is that the squirrel thing with wings?
Yeah, it's a flying squirrel.
It's a flying squirrel? Okay. It says that you love gymnastics and teal is your favorite color. Alright, well, thank y'all so much for being here. If everybody will stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance with our students. Let's give our pledge leaders a round of applause. Okay, so every month, we read the Lincoln County Schools' Mission Statement just to keep us focused on while we are all here. And I'm gonna turn it over to one of our new board members, Brandy Wyatt, to lead us in the Mission Statement.
Good evening. How is everyone? Alright, so Lincoln County Schools' Mission Statement. Lincoln County Schools will work together with students, families, and the community to ensure a quality, innovative educational program in a safe environment where students become responsible, contributing citizens, and lifelong learners.
Thank you, Ms. Wyatt. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda.
So I have a motion by Mrs. Hevner. Is there a second? I have a second by Ms. Erin Long, so any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion has carried and we have our agenda which has been approved. And I will turn it over to Dr. Allen for our superintendent updates and informational items.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton. So I have three items that I want to bring to everyone's attention. Last week, we had Read Across America Week in Lincoln County and across the nation. It was great participation of our elementary schools. We had a lot of visiting readers from adults in the community to system staff, but also it probably made my heart a little happy, especially with some of our Lincoln folks here today. I saw Lincoln students showing up in our, in our elementary schools and reading to our kids. So kudos to all of those people that helped support reading in our elementary schools. Last week, we also had a chance to host our Lincoln County Schools' Employability Bowl. This is for our high school students that are in our occupational courses study programs, and they all came together to learn job readiness skills, interview skills, and compete against each other in, in these financial tasks and other things that we had them do. And I appreciate all the hard work that Jennifer Hammerick in our department did to head that up. And then last but not least, I haven't seen this come out in the newspaper yet, and maybe I'm kinda letting the cat out of the bag, but I am proud of our partners with Atrium Health in Lincoln. They were nominated and are in the running for a National Rural Health Rural Hospital Award recognition. And part of their application was the work that they are doing with us and the school system to do telemedicine, teletherapy, telepsychiatry. And so that has really impacted our ability to keep kids in school, but also through Atrium Health Lincoln, they are, they are being recognized on a national platform, and I appreciate the work and collaboration that our partners do with us in that. That's all of our announcements this week.
Okay. Well, I will say, as a board member, it makes my heart happy to see pictures posted of our superintendent participating in Read Across America Week in his dog suit. And he even had a backstory that went along with it.
Which also doubles as the reindeer outfit at Christmas, yes. Yeah.
So he told me that he was the cat, oh, tell us.
So it was Cat in the Hat. Dr. Seuss has always Read Across America Weeks, so it's the birthday of Dr. Seuss. Well, I introduced myself as the cousin of Cat in the Hat. I was the dog in the hat. And now all of my notoriety burned up in the, in the fire that the Cat in the Hat got all the glory, and the kids just really kinda believed me, but you know, we moved on quickly from there and it was good.
He was the jaded dog in the hat, so. Okay, well, as typically, the vice chair has led the senior spotlight. And so I'm gonna pass this over, which I've done for the past couple of years, but I'm gonna pass this over now to Ms. Hevner. So if our two seniors who we're gonna spotlight, if you will come up and join Ms. Hevner at the microphone. Thank you.
Hello? Ooh, there I am. Hi. Hello? Okay. How are you all tonight?
Good.
Alright, I'm Krista Hevner, and it's nice to see you guys here tonight, you ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much for being here, and these are both seniors at East Lincoln High Schools. You wanna, you can turn around and kinda wave at the, at the crowd so they can see. So first, I want to, this is very informal, and you did write down some things, but you don't need to worry about what you, what you exactly wrote. But, um, so we have Spencer.
Yes.
And Jack. So I would've talked to you beforehand, so I'm sorry I'm just now meeting you, but just know that we're just here, we just wanna know a little bit more about your career here as students in Lincoln County schools. So Spencer, if you'll tell us, what extracurricular activities are you involved in?
Sorry. Mainly, oh, I'm in theater. I'm also in a bunch of clubs, Beta Club, Hosa Club. And then I am in an EMS Explorers Program, which I only got in because of an invitation that they sent for me from the school because I was in the Health Science Club.
Okay. Jack?
Uh, just my extracurriculars, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so I am in cross-country, swim, track and field, key club, Beta Club, Math Honor Society, National Honor Society. I might be forgetting some. I don't know, there's a couple, but.
I don't know, it looks like we didn't chew our resume.
Yeah. I think that's. Oh, yeah, that, that's a big one, no. Am I allowed to ramble on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, um, yeah, my sophomore year, I had the opportunity of pitching a memorial project that I made for my AP Government class to Representative Jason Sain. And he ended up really liking the idea and allotted me and my partner $130,000 to construct a memorial of the person or county it was named after. So. Still in the works.
Yeah.
Should, should be up soon, yeah.
That's fantastic. You have been, yeah, you got some applause there. You've been very busy. So what was your, has been one of your, or the favorite memory of your school time? Not just high school, but you have something that sticks out.
So during my freshman year, we had our very first show ever, my very first show ever with the school, which was Mama Mia. And so my new friend, who would end up being my best friend at the time, had a camera strapped to them for like a social media thing. So the audience was in, well, in the audience, there was actual people there. And it was our, like, our first show opening night. And so during the very first scene of that very first show, we're up on these really like rickety platforms that could fall at any moment, they didn't. And you're supposed to open up the window and, you know, go Mama Mia. And we were so late on it, and my friend had to cut the camera off and go, oh my God, oh my God, we're awful, we're so bad. And that's one of my favorites, 'cause I don't think I've enjoyed anything like more. I was laughing so hard and then trying to keep a straight face as we went back out the windows.
Okay, that's great. What about you, Jack?
And one of my favorite memories through high school was the second semester of my sophomore year. Between the AP Government class and the Calculus class, there was some like scheduling complications, and the Calculus class was absolutely massive. So because of that, they had to split it in two. And one of the portions was a lot smaller than the other one. There was like 14, 15 people, give or take, and because of that, I was able to get so much more hands-on learning, and we got through everything so much quicker. So after we learned everything, I had so much free time to do like absolutely anything. And I, I had a total blast with that. I developed, I spent time learning new skills. I started card throwing, hit my teacher in the head with one, but that's something we glance over. And I also learned how to make origami and a bunch of other things, so it was totally awesome for me.
Okay. And you used that time to write the proposal to Representative Sain, right? That's what you did. You did that, okay. Origami, card throwing, okay. Got it. And for you, um, what, who, or what has been most, or I guess it would be what or who, would be most helpful or influential to you as your career in school here? Teacher or?
What is or?
Who or what?
Like now? Okay. Well, clearly my family. All of them are sitting here. All of them. You can't miss them. I mean, then there's been like a bunch of really great teachers who have liked, talked in depth with me about everything. I mean, my director Franklin, who I spend every minute with, I mean, I just came from him, have a watch on 30 minutes ago? So he's clearly like helped me with a bunch of stuff, including like classes and what I should take. A bunch of counselors, I've been able to like sit down and be like, I wanna do this, how do I do this? And my health science teacher, Mrs. Clark, who bring in an EMT, right? She bring in a paramedic, who talked about what he, how he got there and what he did and what his job actually was. I was like, oh, I wanna do that, and it was the right choice. Yeah, so those have been super influential.
Well, for people who influenced me, there's a lot, there's a lot of teachers I could list, and am I good to go ahead and do that? Yeah. So Mr. and Mrs. Dragoon were both two great teachers for me. They helped push me go forward in my academic career. I'd say I was in the proudest of myself freshman year, and I was a little lazy on work for school, and having both their classes, especially Mr. Dragoon's AP Calc class, really helped push me forward. Mr. Thornburg as a coach and teacher. His class is an absolute blast, and I don't know what I would do without it. Ms. Murdock in her AP Seminar class helped me become great at presenting and develop a lot of writing skills. And outside of teachers, of course, I have to thank my family. They're absolutely incredible and they keep me going through the day. Especially my sister, who is a big role model for me. She went to East Lincoln High School before me, and she was the salve dictatorian. And you know, of course, I couldn't let her be better than me because, you know, that would hurt my ego. So unfortunately, I'm not where she is right now, but that, that effort was present, but.
Why would you say that? My brother's glaring at me.
Okay. Is there anything that you would point out as a challenge that you had while you were in school and a way that you ever came that? If you can think of something that maybe, oh, okay.
We came from COVID year. That was awful. So like getting back into actually doing work, little difficult. And then keeping up with all the work, getting classes to go to college, doing college stuff, scholarship stuff, really stressful. Time management? He just lists all that clubs, and I don't know how he does it, 'cause I'm at theater like 24/7, and then EMS 24/7, and I feel like I don't have a time for anything. So this is definitely struggles.
Yeah, I'm kinda like what I said last time, my freshman year, I was very lazy, and especially coming back from after COVID, I, my productivity was definitely at an all-time low. So that was a big challenge for me coming through things. And on top of that, juggling a lot of responsibilities were a lot of like difficult challenges for me. But I've learned that the best way for me to get through it is sit down, throw my phone across the room, and then just start working. And most of the time, it worked out for me, but, you know.
Wyatt, have the mic. Is there anything that you wanted to add, that you would like to add about your time here in Lincoln County schools?
Oh, um, about my time at Lincoln County schools, I actually, I think my favorite thing about doing this is the opportunities I was presented with to challenge myself. Because I don't think if I made the decisions that I made to maybe take the classes that I took or get involved in the sports that I have, I don't think I would be the person that I am today. Taking the difficult classes that I met, I gotta meet so many incredible teachers and getting involved in clubs and sports. I've met so many incredible people in other surrounding communities just outside of Lincoln County schools, and even people within Lincoln County schools. I mean, other than the Benjamin Lincoln thing, I haven't been as involved in the county like in general, but starting my senior year, I was invited to the Student Advisory Council, and that allowed me to also connect with so many other people from other schools as well, and it has just been an absolutely incredible experience here. Um, next year, I hope to go to, I'm still ify on college, maybe Chapel Hill, potentially NC State, and go into biomedical engineering.
Got one more thing to add.
So, of course, I've been surrounded by like so many like great teachers and so many opportunities that were given to me, because my teachers and the people who surrounded me spoke up about everything I did. So when I excelled in like Health Science and showed a real like genuine, oh my goodness, sorry, I'm forgetting my words. Interest, yeah. A real genuine interest, my teacher spoke up and I got an invitation to join an Explorers Group, which helped me get like ride-alongs on ambulances and so I could figure out what to do. And then theater, which is like taught me so much. I mean, I compete against other schools in Lincoln County. I get to talk to other props managers in Lincoln County and learn how they do things. And I am going to Nationals for that competition now, so it has been pretty incredible. And learning how to act and be on stage and be less scared of everyone like looking at you is such like a great skill to learn, though it's not helping now.
Great. What are you doing next year?
Uh, next year, I'm hoping to go, oh, I am. I'm going to college at Western, Western Carolina University to try and get my, be a paramedic at the bachelor's degree, and then come back here and be a paramedic.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
A round of applause for these two amazing seniors. We have incredible students here in Lincoln County, and I'm so proud to get to talk to you both tonight, so thank you so much. And thank you to the families for being here to support them. Thank you so much. Board members, if you'll join me out front, and our seniors can come back for a second. Sir, come back.
Uh, the Board of Realtors, the Lincoln County Board of Realtors, and these two special ladies who are representing the board this evening, they have been fantastic partners to our school system for years, but the last couple of years, three, Patricia? Three years have made great contributions to the fund that goes to our Career and College Promise students. Last year, it was $7,000 and some odd dollars, wasn't it, Patricia? Seven, and that supported 42 odd, you know, here, give or take, a few students for their CCP funds, which, you know, that, that is a big, that is, that is a massive contribution. And that supports a lot of students and sets them on their path to college, you know, getting their feet wet while they're in high school and then going afterwards. So we just wanna thank you so much for your contributions to our school system, in particular our students. But we also know you have another reason to be here, right? Not only are we recognizing from last year, but.
Brought you some money.
This year. This year, we got you some money this year.
Thank you very much.
This year, yeah, this year on behalf of the Realtors, we had a fundraiser this year, and we were able to do a little better. So we are presenting a check for $8,200 for the College Now Program, and we hope we get to continue this. We know it's a really good program and it helps so many students rather than one big one, so we hope this will help y'all.
Thank you. We hope you continue it. Thank you very much. Love you, don't forget to picture.
Linda? Thank y'all. Alright, thank you. We are now going to move into our Lincoln Leads Recognitions. First, we're gonna start out with Battleground Elementary and their Loving Lincoln County Project. So all those associated with that, if you would come up, please? And then while they're coming up, I'm gonna, actually, I'm gonna call out your names, right? And then I'm gonna read about what you all did. So where's Zoe? Zoe, if you'll come right over there, just kinda line up, after I call your name, go over there, and then Reed? Reed, and then Nathan, and then Declan, and then Tinley, and then Alden, and then Amelia, and then Doran. Perfect. Now, as they're shaking hands, I'm gonna read to you why Mrs. Withrow and Mrs. Hobus chose this as their Lincoln Leads Recognition. Mrs. Withrow says Battleground Elementary believes in giving service to the surrounding community so that they can give back to those in our county. Teaching children how to serve builds character, work ethic, and appreciation for others. This year, one of Battleground's projects is Loving Lincoln County. Remember last year, it was Loving Lincoln Town and the city, but this year, they spread to the county. This project involves 30 students that are in 3rd through 5th grade, so this is just a small representation of that. They're raising money to support the local YMCA's in Lincoln and Denver. The goal was to raise $12,000, but we know how these kids work. Did you meet your goal? And then where are you now? Do you know your total now? What is it? $12,500, and they still have, yes, I know. And they are still collecting until March 27th. So if any of you feel the need, you can see one of these children, they would be glad to talk to you, and then they will give it, give it to the YMCA at the end of March. Battleground has several students who are beneficiaries of this YMCA, and they have firsthand experience of what the Y has brought to their lives during difficult times. And we know that Loving Lincoln County will continue to build up children in our community as we raise funds to support this organization. And so they had their program last week, or two weeks ago, on February 27th, where they served a dinner, and they greeted people with firm handshakes and lots of smiles, which they're getting very good at that now. Many younger students are watching the project unfold, like kindergarten, 1st, 2nd, 3rd grade, and they cannot wait to see what will happen next year. So great job, Loving Lincoln Town, Lincoln County. Right in the middle. That was Battleground, thank you. Next? Next, we have from Iron Station, Mr. Jordan Towery. Okay, you can cheer, y'all can cheer. Mr. Towery. Mr. Towery, is your new, yes, go right, oh, there's a certificate. For the Student Council for Iron Station Elementary School, the Student Leadership Team, which is led by Mr. Towery, it helps to make the school a fun and friendly face for everyone. They plan cool events like Spirit Days and helping their friends be kind and offering support when someone needs it. They listen to everyone's ideas, and then they meet and share them with the teachers and the principal. And they encourage everyone to do their best in showing school spirit. They also create their morning broadcasts, which is top-notch, might I say? We've seen snippets of it, and I, they handle all the mail distribution, they open car doors in the mornings, and they help students get to and from class each morning, and also provide opportunities to give back to the staff. Great job, Mr. Towery and Student Council.
Board members, we are here tonight to recognize one of our outstanding bus drivers. I'd ask that Tony Friday, if you'd just come and stand with me for just a minute? Mr. Friday is a dedicated bus driver for Lincoln Middle School, and on Wednesday, February 26th, he demonstrated excellent situational awareness, outstanding judgment, and quick thinking during his afternoon bus route. While transporting a student home, Mr. Friday noticed something unusual happening in the back of the bus. He prepared to pull over, he called out to several other students. He prepared to pull over. He called out to several other students to ask what was happening. A student replied that another student had, had become unresponsive. Mr. Friday, uh, asked the classmates to stay with the individual and Mr. Friday immediately recognized the severity of the health issue. But then, with no, without any hesitation, Mr. Friday redirected his route to Atrum Health. He requested his students to stay by their classmates' side and within just a few minutes, he was pulling into the emergency room parking lot. He then proceeded to lay on the horn to get this attention of the security and medical staff, which quickly came to the bus and rendered, uh, urgent medical attention to the student. Mr. Friday's attentive, rapid response, unwavering commitment to student safety is truly commensable. His ability to assess the situation and take immediate decisive action undoubtedly played a critical role in ensuring the positive outcome for this student in distress.
So, every year, Lincoln County schools partners with the Lincoln County Soil and Water Conservation District, uh, to provide a hands-on field trip, an essay contest for our sixth graders across the county. This year's essay theme was Wetlands Are Wonderful. Students take what they learned on the field trip as well as paired with classroom instruction and then they have to turn around and write an essay. And this year's winning essay, which is written from the point of view of a person, object, or animal, was written by sixth grader Roland Parks from East Lincoln Middle School. I'd like to thank, um, Mr. Springer, his assistant principal, and his science teacher, Ms. Raphus, for also attending to support him. And Roland has to read, will be reading his essay next week at the Rotary Luncheon and receive a certificate for his, um, award then as well.
Staff would like to recognize two students from North Lincoln High School this evening who ended up not being able to be here this evening, but we're gonna recognize them anyway because they finished in the top ten in the state, uh, in Microsoft PowerPoint and Microsoft Word. And those two students are Anthony Tran, who finished third place, uh, and Ansley Mayberry, who finished in tenth place. And also, would like to recognize Mr. Brett Welch, who told, who taught those two students last semester, um, as an outstanding educator in Microsoft. So, two top-ten finishers. That's great, but they're not here.
All right, thank you. Um, I'd like to first call up, uh, East Lincoln High School men's swim team. All of you. All right, congratulations to the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five East Lincoln High School men's swimming team. They had incredible season. Uh, they secured their fourth consecutive Western Foothill Athletic Conference Championship, uh, with a conference record of eleven and three. Also, they placed third in the Western Region and sixth in the 3A State Championships. That's a great accomplishment, uh, for your swim team. Again, congratulations to the twenty-four, twenty-five Western Foothills Athletic Conference Champions, East Lincoln High School Mustangs. And so, if, if Ryder Warner and Coach, uh, Thornburg would stay up here, the rest of y'all, y'all already got your picture taken, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so Ryder Warner claimed a state championship title in the one-hundred-yard backstroke and was runner-up in the two-hundred-yard freestyle. He also set the new individual school record in the one-hundred-yard backstroke, the two-hundred-yard freestyle, and the five-hundred-yard freestyle. So, congratulations. Those are a lot of accomplishments, but especially the state championship and then turning around and almost winning another one in the same year. So, congratulations. Okay? All right, thank you. And then Coach, Coach Thornburg was named the Coach of the Year for the Western Foothills Athletic Conference for Swim, so wanna congratulate him as well. Congratulations, Coach. And next, I'd like to call up, uh, John Mauney for Lincoln Town High School. So, John was named the Catawba Valley 2A Conference Swimmer of the Year. John has been an all-conference swimmer. Every year, he has swam for Lincoln Town Wolves. He placed him first and second in his, in his, uh, the individual events. This year, he placed second place in the fifty-free, the one-hundred-fly, and the four-hundred-free relay. He has qualified and swam at regionals all three years and he has been a part of the team and ended this season with personal best in all of his events. Congratulations again to John Mauney for being the Catawba Valley 2A Conference Swimmer of the Year. Next, I'd like to call up Gavin Galami, Jay Mills, and Brandon McBride, wrestlers at Lincoln Town, Lincoln Town High School. All right, first of all, I'm gonna read about Gavin Galami. He's a junior. He wrestled a hundred and seventy pounds, a hundred and seventy-five pounds this year. His season record was forty-seven and twelve. He was named All-Conference for the Catawba Valley Athletic, uh, Conference. He placed fourth in the 2A West Regionals, but then he turns around and places third in the state. So, congratulations. Your career record is a hundred and twelve and fifty-six and he's only a junior. So, congratulations, uh, to Gavin. Then I'm gonna, I'm gonna read through the other two. Uh, Jay Mills, he's just a sophomore. Uh, he wrestled a hundred and sixty-five pounds this season. He, his season record was forty-four and fourteen, also All-Conference. He placed fourth in the 2A West Regions and then Jay placed fifth in the state this year and his career record is fifty and eighteen. So, Jay, continue your good work. You got two more years to go try to break, uh, the, the all-time record, okay? Brandon McBride is also a junior, a hundred and fifty pounds this season is what he wrestled. His record for this year was forty-six and nine, also was named All-Conference. He was the 2A West, a hundred and fifty-pound regional champion and then Brandon placed third in the state and his career record right now is one fifteen and twenty-nine. And I know Coach Gage is excited because all three of y'all will be back for next year's team. So, congratulations again on your accomplishments. Take a, take a picture. The next three people I'd, I'd like to call up, they're not gonna be able to be here tonight because they have other practices, but I'm gonna read real, something real quick about them. Um, Aiden DeLuca, uh, is a junior. He won the state championship in the two-hundred IM. So, congratulations to him, especially being a state champion. Uh, Jackson Crowe, uh, he was a state champion in the one-hundred-fly and finished second in the one-hundred-back. So, congratulations, uh, to him as well. He, he's only a sophomore. And then, um, Kaylee Holler, she's only a sophomore. She finished second in the state in the one-hundred breaststroke and third in the state in the one-hundred-fly. So, congratulates, congratulations to them from North Lincoln High School. Um, and again, they weren't able to be here. And then, I believe, last but not least, we are going to recognize North Lincoln High School, three wrestlers. They don't look alike at all. So, um, no, I'm just kidding. They're the Helms triplets, like them come on up. And, and their coaches. Okay, so first of all, I'm gonna read about Kayden Helms. Um, he's the only two, yeah. He's the only two-time conference and regional champion. He's a two-time state qualifier, two ti, two thousand twenty-four and two, two thousand twenty-five state tournament medalist and his sea, season record was fifty-five and one and he wrestled a hundred and twenty-six pound weight class for 3A. Congratulations, Kayden. Till Helms, all right. He wrestled a hundred and thirty-two pounds, uh, for North Lincoln High School. He's a three-time regional qualifier and placer and a three-time state qualifier. Two thousand twenty-four and two twenty, two thousand twenty-five state runner-up. He's a school record win, wins holder at a hundred and seventy-three all, overall, uh, wins and his season record this year was fifty and three. So, congratulations again, uh, Till. And then Gage told me to say, save the best for last, so, there you go, Gage. Um, he wrestled a hundred and thirty-eight pounds. He's a three-time conference champion, two-time state qualifier. His season record was, um, fifty and six. So, congratulations again on your, on your big accomplishments. All three are going to Gardner Webb University and to ki, to continue their education and they will also continue their wrestling. All three are gonna wrestle for Gardner Webb Running Bulldogs. So, congratulations for all three of y'all and making, uh, North Lincoln proud. Thank y'all.
All right, board members, we do not have any requests to speak before the board, uh, per policy. So, moving on, we do have a need for a closed session. I will turn it over to, uh, Mr. Dean Shatley, our attorney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, we need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen, point eleven, subsection A one, to discuss matters that are confidential under the law, particularly student matters and employee matters, and under subsection A three, um, to discuss matters that are protected by the attorney-client privilege.
I have a motion by Ms. Hebner. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second, Madam Slone. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is carried. We are now in closed session.
Board members, we are now back in open session. No action was taken. So without objection, we will add to consent agenda 1510, which will be real estate contract extension. All right, so moving on to action items, we have our LCS teach return to inspire program, Ms. Carpenter, Ms. Frye and Ms. McGraw. They provided us some information. The last couple of months, we've talked about this extensively, the program that will be designed to capture folks who have graduated from Lincoln County, and it will encourage them to enter the teaching profession and to return to Lincoln County. So I will entertain a motion to approve as submitted.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Jenkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hevner. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion is carried. We have up next 14.3, which is the memorandum of agreement for school funding model. Again, you know, we've talked about this extensively, and it is an MOA that outlines the funding for Lincoln County schools moving forward with the county. So I will entertain a motion to approve as presented. I have a motion by Ms. Hevner. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Wyatt. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion is carried. All right, we have our consent agenda items. We have our approval of minutes from the work session, February 4th, 2025, the monthly meeting, February the 11th, 2025, personnel recommendations, extended field trips, curricular approval of policies where required to stand open for 25 days for input as presented. On the agenda, we have approval of policies which stood open 25 days as presented on the agenda, approval of bids, West Lincoln High School gym old, West Lincoln High School old gym roof replacement, vehicle purchase, maintenance van, student transfer availability 2025-2026, the summer program plan 2024-25, and the real estate contract extension. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. I have a motion by Ms. Long. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jenkins. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion is carried. So if you'll notice, we have a few reminders and announcements. We have our next work session, which is April 1st, April Fool's Day, and we have our monthly board meeting on April 8th. You should have all received an email as well from Linda with a new calendar that you can add. Super helpful. If you have anything that you see that's happening at a school or across the county that you feel like other board members would be interested in, feel free to add it, and it's a great way for us to keep up with what's going on. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Ms. Hevner. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Jenkins. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion is carried. So if you'll notice, we have a few reminders and announcements. We have our next work session, which is April 1st, April Fool's Day, and we have our monthly board meeting on April 8th. You should have all received an email as well from Linda with a new calendar that you can add. Super helpful. If you have anything that you see that's happening at a school or across the county that you feel like other board members would be interested in, feel free to add it, and it's a great way for us to keep up with what's going on. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Ms. Hevner. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Wyatt. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion is carried. All right, we have our consent agenda items. We have our approval of minutes from the work session, February 4th, 2025, the monthly meeting, February the 11th, 2025, personnel recommendations, extended field trips, curricular approval of policies where required to stand open for 25 days for input as presented. On the agenda, we have approval of policies which stood open 25 days as presented on the agenda, approval of bids, West Lincoln High School gym old, West Lincoln High School old gym roof replacement, vehicle purchase, maintenance van, student transfer availability 2025-2026, the summer program plan 2024-25, and the real estate contract extension. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. I have a motion by Ms. Long. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hevner. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion is carried. So if you'll notice, we have a few reminders and announcements. We have our next work session, which is April 1st, April Fool's Day, and we have our monthly board meeting on April 8th. You should have all received an email as well from Linda with a new calendar that you can add. Super helpful. If you have anything that you see that's happening at a school or across the county that you feel like other board members would be interested in, feel free to add it, and it's a great way for us to keep up with what's going on. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Ms. Hevner. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Jenkins. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion is carried. We have up next 14.3, which is the memorandum of agreement for school funding model. Again, you know, we've talked about this extensively, and it is an MOA that outlines the funding for Lincoln County schools moving forward with the county. So I will entertain a motion to approve as presented. I have a motion by Ms. Hevner. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Wyatt. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion is carried. We have up next 14.3, which is the memorandum of agreement for school funding model. Again, you know, we've talked about this extensively, and it is an MOA that outlines the funding for Lincoln County schools moving forward with the county. So I will entertain a motion to approve as presented. I have a motion by Ms. Hevner. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Wyatt. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion is carried. All right, we have our consent agenda items. We have our approval of minutes from the work session, February 4th, 2025, the monthly meeting, February the 11th, 2025, personnel recommendations, extended field trips, curricular approval of policies where required to stand open for 25 days for input as presented. On the agenda, we have approval of policies which stood open 25 days as presented on the agenda, approval of bids, West Lincoln High School gym old, West Lincoln High School old gym roof replacement, vehicle purchase, maintenance van, student transfer availability 2025-2026, the summer program plan 2024-25, and the real estate contract extension. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. I have a motion by Ms. Long. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jenkins. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion is carried. So if you'll notice, we have a few reminders and announcements. We have our next work session, which is April 1st, April Fool's Day, and we have our monthly board meeting on April 8th. You should have all received an email as well from Linda with a new calendar that you can add. Super helpful. If you have anything that you see that's happening at a school or across the county that you feel like other board members would be interested in, feel free to add it, and it's a great way for us to keep up with what's going on. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Ms. Hevner. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Jenkins. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion is carried. So if you'll notice, we have a few reminders and announcements. We have our next work session, which is April 1st, April Fool's Day, and we have our monthly board meeting on April 8th. You should have all received an email as well from Linda with a new calendar that you can add. Super helpful. If you have anything that you see that's happening at a school or across the county that you feel like other board members would be interested in, feel free to add it, and it's a great way for us to keep up with what's going on. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Ms. Hevner. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Wyatt. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion is carried. All right, we have our consent agenda items. We have our approval of minutes from the work session, February 4th, 2025, the monthly meeting, February the 11th, 2025, personnel recommendations, extended field trips, curricular approval of policies where required to stand open for 25 days for input as presented. On the agenda, we have approval of policies which stood open 25 days as presented on the agenda, approval of bids, West Lincoln High School gym old, West Lincoln High School old gym roof replacement, vehicle purchase, maintenance van, student transfer availability 2025-2026, the summer program plan 2024-25, and the real estate contract extension. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. I have a motion by Ms. Long. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jenkins. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion is carried. So if you'll notice, we have a few reminders and announcements. We have our next work session, which is April 1st, April Fool's Day, and we have our monthly board meeting on April 8th. You should have all received an email as well from Linda with a new calendar that you can add. Super helpful. If you have anything that you see that's happening at a school or across the county that you feel like other board members would be interested in, feel free to add it, and it's a great way for us to keep up with what's going on. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Ms. Hevner. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Jenkins. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion is carried. So if you'll notice, we have a few reminders and announcements. We have our next work session, which is April 1st, April Fool's Day, and we have our monthly board meeting on April 8th. You should have all received an email as well from Linda with a new calendar that you can add. Super helpful. If you have anything that you see that's happening at a school or across the county that you feel like other board members would be interested in, feel free to add it, and it's a great way for us to keep up with what's going on. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Ms. Hevner. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Wyatt. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion is carried. All right, we have our consent agenda items. We have our approval of minutes from the work session, February 4th, 2025, the monthly meeting, February the 11th, 2025, personnel recommendations, extended field trips, curricular approval of policies where required to stand open for 25 days for input as presented. On the agenda, we have approval of policies which stood open 25 days as presented on the agenda, approval of bids, West Lincoln High School gym old, West Lincoln High School old gym roof replacement, vehicle purchase, maintenance van, student transfer availability 2025-2026, the summer program plan 2024-25, and the real estate contract extension. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. I have a motion by Ms. Long. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jenkins. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion is carried. So if you'll notice, we have a few reminders and announcements. We have our next work session, which is April 1st, April Fool's Day, and we have our monthly board meeting on April 8th. You should have all received an email as well from Linda with a new calendar that you can add. Super helpful. If you have anything that you see that's happening at a school or across the county that you feel like other board members would be interested in, feel free to add it, and it's a great way for us to keep up with what's going on. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Ms. Hevner. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Jenkins. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion is carried, and we are adjourned.